Good evening and welcome to the November 15, 2021 special session of the Mayor and City Council. And in order to legally hold a special session, we need to open up with a motion here. And I'm going to call on Councilmember Harris to make the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Mayor and City Council of the City of Gaithersburg conduct a special session on Monday, November 15, 2021, solely to receive the certification of election results, to swear in the newly elected Mayor and City Council members, and to allow for parting remarks from outgoing council members.
Do we have a second? Ryan Spiegel.
Second.
Okay, I will call the roll. All those in favor say aye and the opposed say nay. Council Vice President Sesma.
Aye.
Councilmember Spiegel.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Wu.
Aye.
And Councilmember Sales.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, Carrie's unanimously. And we are now in a official special session. So we're going to open the special session with the Pledge of Allegiance as it's our custom. And I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Wu to lead us in the pledge this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very, very quick rendition. Thank you. Thank you, Rob. We appreciate that. So next on our agenda, you know, this is something that happens once in a blue moon. We have two outgoing council members and tonight will be their last time, at least for now, at the dais. But before I turn it over to Loriann, Councilmember Sales, and Council Vice President Sesma, I wanted to let you guys know, this was a special day for many reasons. But it also happens to be Mike Sesma Day in the City of Gaithersburg and Loriann Sales Day in the City of Gaithersburg. And I'm going to read you proclamations that you guys will be receiving from staff. You know, it's too bad we can't do this in person, but the proclamation reads, "Proclamation of the Mayor and City Council of Gaithersburg, Designating November 15, 2021, as Michael A. Sesma Day and Loriann Sales Day in the City of Gaithersburg, In honor and celebration of your years of outstanding public service to those who live, work, and play in Gaithersburg. Your leadership as a city council member, your service on our advisory committees and your leadership in national organizations have contributed to the reputation Gaithersburg enjoys as a caring, welcoming, and thoughtful community. You exemplify the true meaning of commitment and you have served with distinction. Thank you for leaving us a legacy of excellence. Best wishes for continued success and happiness in all of your endeavors to achieve in the future." And with that, I wanted to, I wanted to open with that and then I want to turn it over for any final remarks for Councilmember Sales.
Thank you, Mayor Ashman, staff, and my colleagues. I was trying to put into words all the emotions and everything that's occurred during my first term, so I'm going to try and get through my remarks without without getting emotional. So here goes nothing. This is a love letter to the city I love. All right. Okay, to love and be loved are the most incredible treasured experiences one can encounter. And I want to take a few minutes to talk about Gaithersburg, the city I love. I fell in love with my community when I moved here with my family over seven years ago. My neighbors were all friendly and engaged and my daughter was within walking distance of parks and green spaces. I never imagined how my life would change so dramatically as I pursued my passion for public service. As an appointed member of the Education and Enrichment Committee, I learned about the increasing need for diverse students and teachers to learn in an environment conducive to their needs. From technological to mental health to infrastructure support, our schools demanded more of us. I was thankful for the opportunity to effectively respond by advocating for the resources we needed to thrive. Moreover, I'm proud of the reputation of fiscal prudence our city is known for, being a pay-as-you-go city with zero debt. As an appointed member of the city's Economic and Business Development Committee, I deepen my level of commitment and contribution to cultivating a vibrant economy for our community. These appointments are just a snapshot of my experiences with our city before becoming a member of this esteemed body of local leaders. Now, as I reflect on the last four years as an at-large council member of the most diverse city in the country, I want to share my top 10 highlights from my first term. In 2017, I made history becoming the first African-American elected to the Gaithersburg City Council and the top vote getter, proving that persistence and hard work go a long way towards making a difference. I was honored to be named to the Daily Records 2018 listing of Maryland's Top 100 Women, recognized for outstanding achievements demonstrated through professional accomplishments, community leadership, and mentoring. Nearly 425 women were nominated that year for the statewide honor. In May of that following year, I attended a bill signing with my colleague and then-President Ryan Spiegel of the Maryland Municipal League to celebrate the passage of MML's priority legislation to begin to restore municipal highway user revenue fees to pre-recession levels to allow for more money for local transportation projects. And then my first official duty took me to Charlotte, North Carolina to attend the annual National League of Cities Conference for municipal leaders all over the country. The National League of Cities is the nation's oldest and largest organization devoted to building strong federal-local partnerships and strengthening and promoting cities as centers of opportunity, leadership, and governance. In 2018, I was appointed to chair the National League of Cities Community and Economic Development Federal Advocacy Committee. In this role, I became a member of the National League of Cities Board of Directors. I was able to work with my colleagues around the country to harness the power of our collective voice to address issues like the affordable housing crisis, invest in infrastructure, combat the opioid epidemic, and build a sustainable future that allows us to maintain and enhance the integrity of our cities, towns, and villages. During that year, I also hosted the Community and Economic Development Committee's annual meeting in the City of Gaithersburg. I was able to show off all the incredible amenities our city has to offer, including some key meetings with senior leaders of the HUD team, a tour of the NIST Zero Energy Home, and keynotes from the Executive Director of the Housing Opportunities Commission and Senator Van Hollen. In 2019, I worked successfully with my colleagues and stakeholders to protect local authority in the siting of 5G small cell facilities, including opposition to preemption of zoning, right-of-way access, design standards, and permitting processes. In 2020, I was proud to have chaired the county's Women's Equality Day Centennial Celebration. I want to thank all of the co-planners, participants, and co-hosts for their support and participation. And I think even our mayor signed on to our 100-women's declaration to continue voting. So thank you for your support, Mayor. I was also named Vice President of this council by my colleagues. And I don't think any of us could have prepared for the two national crises we faced and continue to grapple with, the pandemic and a racial reckoning. These events dramatically shifted how we conducted city businesses when we pivoted to teleworking and remote meetings. During this year, I hosted Talk, Walk, Listen and began the long road to spearheading the passage of the Racial Equity Resolution that I hope provides the necessary racial equity lens to the decision-making process for how the city conducts business moving forward. 2020, I was also honored to be recognized by the Montgomery County Commission for Women and Montgomery Woman for their Woman Making History event during Women's History Month last March. Each woman was selected based on her contributions to her organization and efforts in the community. I was also recognized by the National League of Cities Caucus at their annual meeting as the 2020 Legislator of the Year for being instrumental in advocating for increased women representation in local government and serving as a role model for future female local leaders. Furthermore, the remaining highlights might seem small in comparison to the legislative victories we've won, but these highlights will forever be special to me. Reading to our elementary school students during their annual guest reader for the day, moderating panels at our annual book festival, cutting the ribbon on the opening of a new business like our city's first dispensary, Xfinity, and most recently, Novavax. And speaking of Novavax, I'm so proud of our growing biotech corridor. We have finally expanded across I-270 to the east side of our city, expanding the economic development opportunities to catch up with investments made on the west side. I was also part of my first master plan from start to finish with the passage of the Lake Forest Master Plan. Lastly, as I end my term as council member, again, I would like to thank my Gaithersburg City Council colleagues for their continued support throughout this journey. We didn't always agree, but I appreciate your wisdom, your patience, and the collegial environment we created. I am battle-tested. A few scrapes here and there, but I'm still hungry for more. The City of Gaithersburg gave me the knowledge, support, and encouragement to lead during an unprecedented time in the history of our country. As a local elected official, I have learned to build consensus with others, even when you are on the opposite sides of the aisle. I have learned that time is so significant and you should spend it with the ones you love doing the things you love, the things that fulfill you. And I loved every moment of my service. In the spirit of Thanksgiving, again, I want to thank the city staff for preparing me for anything and everything at a moment's notice. Again, my colleagues, our incoming council members, and most importantly, you, Gaithersburg. Thank you to our incredible residents that voted for me to serve and lead. It has been the honor of a lifetime to serve our community in this role. Although my term has ended, I want you to know that this won't be the last you will see of me. I will remain active in our community and probably sign up to testify before this body a few times. And my commitment to our community continues as I continue my season of service and pursue a run for county council at large to represent everyone in our county. And with that, I yield.
Thank you so much, Loriann. Yeah. Really appreciate your heartfelt remarks and I'll have a few more things to say a little bit later. I want to give Mike a chance to speak, but before, right before I go to Mike, I noticed we now have a bunch of people signed on to the Zoom. And so I just want to acknowledge the technical difficulty that we are having and we're glad that we have this number of people on Zoom at this point. We learned a few minutes before this meeting started that there was a technical glitch between Zoom, our Zoom webinar subscription, and the service through which we stream from our Zoom meetings to YouTube and to Twitter and to Facebook. So we're not live streaming. So anybody who wants to watch it live, you know, you have to be on Zoom and I'm glad everybody, I'm glad this many people are. However, I do want to note that this meeting is being recorded and it will be uploaded to our YouTube channel, so it will be viewable in perpetuity after the fact. So thank you for your patience and sorry for the inconvenience. And again, Loriann, thank you for those wonderful remarks. And I'm going to turn it over to Council Vice President Sesma.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the opportunity almost a month ago at our last regular meeting to deliver some remarks about my experience on the council and all the opportunities I had. So tonight, my remarks are really just about people, people I've worked with, et cetera. So in a few minutes, I'll be casting the final vote of my city council career after 16 years as a council member. The vote will be to accept the certified results of the November 2 election. I appreciate and I'm grateful for the opportunity, privilege, and responsibility to represent and serve the city and its residents. I'm proud of what we've accomplished in the past 16 years, but also know that there was always more to do. I will leave that to the next council. You know, that 16 years is about a quarter of my life, so it has some significance for me and my family. Gaithersburg is the only city in Maryland that we have called home. And my wife, Joanie, and I have lived in our Gaithersburg home longer than we've lived anywhere else in our lives. So Gaithersburg is important to us in that way as well. We also have two grandchildren who now call Gaithersburg home. Harper and Charlie love living in Gaithersburg. So I want to acknowledge those who made my four terms possible and allowed me to try to work for and on behalf of the city and its residents. Foremost is my wife, Joanie, and my three daughters, Jennifer, Amelia, and Elena, and now my grandchildren. They've been the foundation of support for my work on the council. And as all of us know, none of us could do this without the consent, approval, and perspectives of our families. My family, believe it or not, my family is happy and proud of my service, but also very happy that I've decided to move on. They get the next 16 years and hopefully more than that. I want to acknowledge my colleagues, past and present. I'm grateful for your good counsel, healthy arguments, support, patience, a lot of patience often, mentorship, and most of all, your friendship. Want to thank all of those who sent good wishes on my decision to retire from this role. I'm grateful for the support over these four terms, especially for those who've helped with the four campaigns that we ran. It's been the ride of a life. It's been repeated three times. It's time to let somebody else ride that horse. So whatever we accomplished as a council in the 16 years has had everything to do with the city staff and city leadership. I will accept responsibility for what we couldn't get done and give credit to staff for all the good things that we've accomplished as a council. Their hard work, ingenuity, creativity, and prompt responses to service and to address the needs of our residents has made me very proud. There aren't enough superlatives to describe how much I appreciate that hard work. You know, council members come up with lots of big and small ideas. Some of these are realistic, practical, possible, and seemingly easily implemented. But some of us, some other ideas start as little harebrained thoughts. And what's always been amazed, what's always amazed me is that staff would find a way to take one of those crazy ideas and make something of it. So it's important to remember, and I think our residents know this, certainly the council appreciates that we couldn't accomplish anything as a council without the research and development and leadership needed to implement those ideas that spring from the dais. So I'm exceedingly grateful for the city employees who do all they can to make Gaithersburg the greatest city in the world and making me and my council colleagues look really good in that process. So this 2021 election was a new experience for all of us, but the changes we made seem to have worked. The Board of Supervisors of Election and City Staff planned and managed the election very well. I think we can call it a success. The candidates who stepped up with a commitment to continue our efforts to move Gaithersburg forward deserve recognition. Phil, Dave, Jamil, Stephen, Lisa, Jim, these campaigns and their interactions were models of how an election should be, how a local election should be. I agree with what one of them told me, that no voter cast a vote against any candidate. Voters found what they were looking for in each that received their vote. And it was great to see the amazing turnout, especially on Election Day at the polling place. It was a big improvement over recent elections. The results are gratifying in so many ways, and I think we can look forward to that success of that election continuing. So in closing, let me give my congratulations to those who we've elected. Jed Ashman, my good friend, on your reelection as mayor. You're an inspiring and thoughtful leader. Ideal for the job ahead. Congratulations, Lisa Henderson and Jimmy Melty on your election as our new council members. I'm excited for both of you and look forward to your new ideas and fresh perspectives. I hope they're fresh. I expect that they'll be fresh. Whatever perspectives you provide. I'm very confident that the new city council will continue to move Gaithersburg forward and maintain the quality of life and place we expect and deserve, the greatest city in the world. You and your colleagues, Ryan, Neil, Rob, you all have my confidence and best wishes for great success and my gratitude for committing to this role to lead the greatest city in the world, Gaithersburg, Maryland. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. You did an admirable job holding it together. Really, really, really well done. I do have a few remarks, but I know Tanisha wanted to say a few words on behalf of staff, so let me turn it over to her.
Thank you very much and thanks for giving me an opportunity to speak on behalf of staff. You know, service is a calling and those who answer the call to make a difference in their community are one of a kind. It's not easy living in the public eye and it takes a special person to do so with conviction and compassion. And tonight I have the pleasure of extending the thanks of a grateful city staff for the work that you have done, the legacy you leave behind, and the example you have set for those who will follow. I've only been in Gaithersburg for a little over a year and it became quickly apparent what a special place this is. And I've learned that the unique character and camaraderie of Gaithersburg's elected leaders plays a big part of that. I've only had a personal history with one of your combined 20 years of service. So with the assistance of our incredible staff, we reached back into our archives to pull out a few highlights. Council Vice President Sesma, during your tenure on the council starting in 2005, we adopted unprecedented commercial and residential green building and affordable housing ordinances. We became the first city in Maryland to use biodiesel fuel. We furthered our environmental commitment by installing electric car charging stations, launching a Green Street Pilot Program, banning styrofoam food containers, converting our streetlights to LED, developing an impactful stormwater program, and even hiring goats to eat invasive plants. I wish I had been here for that one. We also dedicated five new parks, adding more weight behind our Green City claim. We've annexed and began development of the Crown Community. We conducted a charrette for the Kentless Commercial District and we witnessed the opening of Archstone Gaithersburg Station in Hidden Creek, which brought the new vibrancy to Old Town. Do you remember that you were also in a leadership position to help coordinate a relief effort for those impacted by Hurricane Katrina? We sent a busload of supplies and donated police cars to communities in Louisiana and Mississippi. And this community had to deal with inspection efforts after an earthquake and cleanup efforts after Hurricane Isabel, Snowmageddon, and a rare derecho that tore through Old Town. Wow, what an eventful 16 years there. Councilmember Sales, you were elected to the council at a time of much turmoil in our country. Our city council responded to national events with strong statements of civility, a resolution against hate, and affirmations of our commitment to diversity, inclusion, freedom, and justice. We held an official Juneteenth celebration, celebrated Pleasant View as the name of our newest park to remember a free black community established here after the Civil War. And we enacted the Racial Equity Awareness and Action Plan, as you mentioned before. These past four years have seen the expansion of the Crown Community, the vital master plan update for Lake Forest Mall, the opening of Watkins Mill Interchange, and the remarkable effort to fast-track the approval of the Novavax headquarters, further solidifying Gaithersburg as a center for biotechnology innovation. Both of you have been active with the National League of Cities, allowing Gaithersburg to enjoy nationwide attention for innovative and unique programs and helping us gain a broader voice for issues that many smaller municipalities share. Along with your colleagues, you helped guide this community through the pandemic. You supported community efforts to keep our residents nourished and housed. You supported testing and vaccination initiatives and worked with colleagues in other jurisdictions to share best practices. Most importantly, you led by example, demonstrating the resilience necessary to keep this community moving forward throughout this difficult time. The City of Gaithersburg staff appreciates your leadership, your thoughtfulness, your civility, and your compassion. It has been our pleasure to work for you as elected officials and it will now be our pleasure to serve you as residents of the great community that you helped shape. Thank you.
Lovely, lovely sentiment, Tanisha. Let's give Tanisha a round of applause. Also very happy that you reminded us of the goat episode. That was really, that was really a special time. We had this field, we needed to clear it, we brought in some goats. Goats did what they do. It just worked out well for everybody. It was great. More goats. We just need to... I wish we had more need for goats more often.
I'm really sad I missed that, so we may need to figure out another need for goats.
We're going to have to find that opportunity. So you know, I don't have all, I'm not sure I can be more eloquent than that, but I do want to just take one more brief moment before we get to the certification of the results to thank Mike and Loriann for their service. And I'll start by wishing Loriann the very best of luck in her current endeavor and her run for Montgomery County Council and in all future endeavors. I really enjoyed getting to know you better over the last four years. And you've been part of a team that's gotten so many amazing things done as Tanisha's ratted off and we really appreciate your service, Loriann. But I feel like it's a little different with you because you're sort of in the early seasons of your political life. And meanwhile, my good friend Mike Sesma is hanging it up. And so I'm not going to get too deep on Mike. I'm going to say a few words here. You know, Mike has been my close friend, political ally, really my brother, my family for more than 20 years. This will not change, of course, but the impact for me personally of not having Mike at the dais will be profound. I commend Mike for being at the forefront of virtually every single important legislative and zoning decision we've made for the last 16 years. I commend him for the good faith with which he's always approached the council role. I've watched him make efforts to support every single city initiative, every special event, every community performance, every employee picnic, every ribbon cutting that he possibly could. I commend him for the example he set for his colleagues and for me. You know, the old, the either saying, he's a mensch and I love him and I want everyone to know it. And I look forward to his contributions, once again, as a citizen advocate, but I will miss him at the dais. We all will. And one further note to everybody else who's watching that since the city cannot hold an in- that since the city cannot hold an in-person reception in honor of Mike's service and his retirement, I look forward to holding one. And I hope that you'll join and and I ask, just keep an eye on the Mayor Judd Ashman Facebook page for announcements, and everyone will be invited to this. And with that, I think I thank you all, and we're going to go, I'm going to invite tech team, if we could bring up Tom Marchessot from our Board of Supervisors of Elections, and he will lead us in the certification of the results. Tom, are you with us? I see a little square there. It looks like you're muted. There we go. Welcome, Tom.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Ashman and members of the city council. The Board of Supervisors of Election held a general election on November 2, 2021 for a four-year term for Gaithersburg Mayor and two four-year terms for the Gaithersburg City Council. For this election, the city used a hybrid election process to include the mail-in and in-person voting. Paper ballots were counted using optical scanner voting equipment, and the board was extremely pleased with how it worked. Results were double-checked using the optical scanner. Report tapes and 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 the memory cards were run through tabulation software. The board certified and counted the mail-in ballots and those cast in person. Ballots that were received within the two-day days after the election and provisional ballots that were completed during the in-person voting were counted so that the official election results are different than the unofficial results released November 2, 2021. A total of 4,836 valid ballots were cast. The Board of Supervisors of Elections has certified that Judd Ashman as being elected as mayor and Lisa Henderson and Jim McNulty as being elected to the city council for four-year terms. Finally, the board would like to thank the the Gaithersburg staff and our election judges for conducting a very thorough and efficient elections. Respectfully, Tom Marchessot and the Board of Supervisors of Elections.
Thank you very much, Tom. I don't Doris, I don't see Lynn here. I know she's having connectivity issues right now. We don't need a a motion to accept that, or do we?
Um, I don't think so. I don't. I'm sorry. That's not a good response, but um.
Yeah.
Let me just double check. I thought that there was a need to accept.
Why don't you do it?
Let's just do it. Okay.
Yeah.
Let's just do it. Okay. I saw Mike's hand go up first. Go ahead, Mike.
Um, I moved that the council accept, vote to accept the certified election results from the Board of Supervisors election as reported just now by Mr. Marchessot.
Thank you. I saw Loriann's hand go up.
Second.
Okay, I will call the roll. All those in favor say aye, and opposed say nay. Council Vice President Sesma.
Aye.
Councilmember Spiegel.
Aye.
Councilmember Wu.
Aye.
Councilmember Sales.
Aye.
And Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Carries unanimously. The results are certified and accepted. We we thank you all very much. This was moment, a momentous vote for both Mike and Loriann. And we appreciate it. So if we were doing this in person, if this wasn't a pandemic, then we would all the 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 victors in this election would would march in turn up to the the podium, and we would swear them in. Since this is a pandemic, we recorded these swearings in in advance, and I'll ask the tech team to play the video.
All right, joining me tonight for my swearing in is my son Jeff and my daughter-in-law Brittany. I'm delighted to have them with us, and we have the cork of the court, Karen Bushell, to swear me in.
All right, good evening. If you will raise your right hand, Judd, and repeat after me. I
I
Judd Ashman.
Judd Ashman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of.
Execute the office of.
Mayor of Gaithersburg.
Mayor of Gaithersburg.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
No, thank you. My pleasure.
Welcome, Lisa. Who who did you bring with us? Who's accompanying you?
Thank you. Today I have my mother with me and my youngest sister, the baby of the family, and my aunt with me today.
Welcome, everybody, and and congratulations. So Lisa, if you would raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I, Lisa Henderson.
I, Lisa Henderson.
Do affirm.
Do affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office.
Execute the office.
Of City Council of the City of Gaithersburg.
Of City Council of the City of Gaithersburg.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
The laws of this state.
The laws of this state.
And the Gaithersburg City Charter and Code.
And the Gaithersburg City Charter and Code.
Congratulations. I'm going to be the first to give you a round of applause and a hug. And what we need you to do is, before you change your mind, is sign right here on the line, and I will sign, and it's official. Excellent. All right, it is official. Jim McNulty, congratulations. Tell us who you have with us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm here with my wife Amy, and my children, and my mom Kathy, and my brother Chris.
All right, welcome, everybody. Jim, if you would raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I, Jim McNulty.
I, Jim McNulty.
Do affirm.
Do affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of.
Execute the office of.
City Council of the City of Gaithersburg.
City Council of the City of Gaithersburg.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
The laws of this state.
The laws of this state.
And the Gaithersburg City Charter and Code.
And the Gaithersburg City Charter and Code.
Congratulations. That is three times in one day reciting the most awkward pledge that there is. But Jim, you sign first to make it official. And I will sign. And it is official. Congratulations, Jim McNulty.
And we now, for the first time, have at the dais, Jim McNulty, Lisa Henderson. Let's give them a round of applause. It would be much louder if this was in person. Just know that, guys. And so we're gonna, we're gonna go around the room with with remarks, and I'm going to start with we're going to start with Lisa, and we're going to go to Jim, and then we're going to go to Neil and Ryan and Rob. Tanisha, if she wants to say a few words, and then I'll I'll say my piece, and we'll be done. So let's go to Lisa Henderson. Welcome and congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor Ashman. I I have written something because otherwise I'm going to ball like a baby. Tonight, we we made history, and in the largest voter turnout in Gaithersburg history, it was through the memory of those who have passed on, and also through the memory of those who are still here, that I celebrate this victory tonight. I stood on the shoulders and the memory of my father, who would always tell me how proud, how proud he was of me and remind me to never get so independent that I felt like I could do it all by myself. And those words stayed with me throughout this entire campaign. And I stood on the shoulders in the memory of my oldest sister Kathy, who would always remind us, her siblings, her underlings, that that she was the one who made the Henderson name cool, and we should never mess it up. And I pray and hope that my sister Kathy is proud of me, proud of me today. And I stood on the shoulders in the memory of Ms. Gwendolyn Reese, who was a mentor to me and a Montgomery County historian and a Gaithersburg resident, who in her helmet made sure that she signed my petition for signature so that I could get my name on the ballot. And I stood on the shoulders in the memory of Ms. Violet Addison, who, when she found out she lived just outside of the city limits and wasn't able to vote for me, wore my campaign T-shirt to her chemo treatments and told everyone that she came in contact with to vote for Lisa Henderson. There were many days in this campaign when I eagerly accepted the full embrace of my mother, who constantly reminded me that no matter how challenging it got, how difficult it seemed, that I could always lean hard on my faith because it would not break. And she was right. It did not break, and I leaned hard. And and she's also the woman who, on her 82nd birthday, gave up a full spa day so that she could attend the Asbury Forum with me, because she told me, she said, Lisa, these are my people. I'm gonna, I'm going with you. And I'm so thankful for her presence and every day of the campaign as she cheered me on. And I stood beside my brothers and sisters, my aunts and my uncles, my nieces and nephews, and my whole family, who was, who, when I told them that I was going to run for office, at least publicly to my face, they didn't say, hey, Lisa, are you crazy? They said, how can I help? And they laced up their shoes and got to work. And I am so thankful for the tireless hours that they gave me, for the times they just sat and listened to me when I didn't even really know what I was talking about. And I also stood before my friends. I stood before my supporters. And I stood before the most amazing campaign team on the planet Earth who had my back every step of the way, every event knocked on as many doors as as we could get a hold of. And they are the reason why Gaithersburg residents, in the middle of the night, would wake up, will wake up for some time now and minus, mindlessly say, vote for Lisa Henderson, vote for Lisa Henderson. It is a chant that will live on forever. And I stand before you, the residents of the City of Gaithersburg, who had the incredible guts to trust me, to believe in me, and most importantly, to vote for me. I felt your passion the entire campaign, and I'm so, so thankful for the opportunity that you have given me to serve as your city council member and the most diverse city in the country. And I'm excited to work with the mayor, with the city council, with the city manager, and the amazing City of Gaithersburg staff. We have lots to do, residents of Gaithersburg, but I have no doubt that we will get it done with the same passion that I saw you exude while I was running for office. And I just want to say from the very, very bottom of my heart, thank you.
Beautiful, beautiful. Give her a round of applause.
Thank you.
All right, let's turn it over to Councilmember Jim McNulty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is extremely humbling, a humbling privilege and honor to be joining you tonight for the first time as a member of the city council. Before I get started, I want to add my congratulations to former council member Mike Sesma on his 16 years of public service and thank him for everything that he has done for our city. And to former council member Loriann Sales as well for her four years on the council. I wish them both the very best in their futures. And I also want to congratulate my newly elected councilmate, Councilmember Lisa Henderson. I've gotten to know her and some of her extended family during the course of the campaign. The City of Gaithersburg is getting an outstanding representative in Lisa Henderson. Not only does she care deeply about the issues, she cares deeply about our people. And I'm excited to work alongside you, Mayor Ashman, and the rest of our city council, as well as our outstanding city staff. As Councilmember Sesma said in his remarks, our city was blessed with a slate of exceptional candidates for the city for the city council this year. And while it is Lisa and myself who have the privilege of getting to join the council, I too want to thank Dave Belleguard, Philip Cook, and Jamil Henderson for their outstanding campaigns. They brought tremendous energy and ideas to the discussion, not to mention a collegiality that caused many people to do a double take. Sadly, people have gotten used to nasty negative politics. But that's not how we do things in Gaithersburg, and I think people appreciated that. Some folks I talked to were surprised when I told them that all five council candidates had a group chat going throughout the campaign. We legitimately became friends over the course of the past few months, and I look forward to continuing those friendships now that the campaign is concluded. Building relationships is so important to being able to get things accomplished and improve the lives of our residents. As I've been told on multiple occasions since election night, it takes three votes to get things done. Five votes is even better. I've had the privilege of getting to know Mayor Ashman and councilmembers Harris, Spiegel, and Wu over the past few years as a constituent, and I'm thrilled to now be able to call you my colleagues. I look forward to working with you and Councilmember Henderson to tackle the challenges and opportunities that come across our desks over the next four years. I know we won't always agree on everything, but I pledge to be open to discussion, to listen to new ideas, and to bring my own perspective into the debate so we can get things done for our city. I ran for office to make sure that residents of the east side of the city had at least one vote on the city council. But I want to be clear that my role is to be the voice for the entire city of Gaithersburg. And I want, and to the people of our great city, both the east and the west, who trusted me to be your voice, I cannot thank you enough. I've lived in Gaithersburg since 2009, after bouncing around between Pennsylvania, Virginia, Tennessee, and then here in Maryland, Germantown and Rockville. Gaithersburg is where my family and I were able to put down roots and find a sense of community. And to be welcomed into this community and be selected to serve the community by our community is one of the greatest honors of my life. And there was much work to be done. As this global pandemic continues to endure, many of our people need our help. Whether it's food insecurity, rent relief, job training, or mental health challenges, we must understand that this pandemic has not impacted the people of Gaithersburg equally. Our small business community has had to be even more agile and resilient to try to keep their lights on and doors open and their people employed. We need to work together to find ways to help those who continue to struggle. We all want to return to normal as soon as possible. But we can't forget that normal, for so many in Gaithersburg, was still a struggle. We need only look at the farms rate for both Gaithersburg Elementary School and the new elementary school at Kelly Park, which will be around 75%. The whole reason for government, going back to the idea of social compact, is to pull our resources together to do the things that we cannot on our own. Government can't be the solution to everything, but we can provide a lifeline and be a partner to help our community achieve their dreams. So much of this job is about balancing competing interests. I believe in taking holistic approach when evaluating any project that comes before the council. Nothing happens in a vacuum, and as we, as a city, ought to be intentional in our decision-making process. Whether it's the future of Lake Forest, Old Town, or infill development anywhere across the city, we need to examine the dominoes that'll fall in either direction as we evaluate an opportunity, including the opportunity costs, as well as impacts on our transportation system and our schools. But let me be clear. We should be encouraging investment in Gaithersburg, but we also need to protect our history, our environment, and our people. As we grow, we stretch our existing resources, including public safety. We've seen increases in crime across across the country, and Gaithersburg is no different. We have a tremendous police force in Gaithersburg led by Chief Stroka. And I encourage our community to join with them through things like the Neighborhood Watch Program to help look out for each other and hopefully reduce the opportunities for bad things to happen. It's my hope that in four years, we'll all be able to look back at all the good things we have accomplished together to make Gaithersburg an even better place to live, work, and play than it is even today, and take pride in our successes and learn from our failures. That journey together begins tonight, and I'm excited to get to work. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Jim. Give him a round of applause. Excellent. Excellent, excellent. Really appreciate those sentiments and, uh, congratulations. And I'm going to go to now council member Harris. Neil, we don't hear you. You're, I don't see the little mute icon, but I don't hear you. Whatever was happening, let's come back, let's come back to you, Neil. We'll go to Ryan. Um, and Neil, you can work out what, if whatever this, the issue was before we went online, that's, it's the same thing. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, good evening again, everyone. Eco goats. I'm so glad that Tanisha reminded us about the eco goats. Uh, because it's actually fitting. On a night when we are celebrating Gaithersburg being what the mayor always likes to call the greatest city in the world. And as all of us know or should know, the acronym GOAT stands for greatest of all time. And the sentiment on display tonight shows that our city is the GOAT. Our mayor and city councils camaraderie and culture and values are the GOAT. And our staff and our residents are truly the greatest of all time. And speaking of goats, a guy with a bit of a scruffy gray on his chin. My friend, Council Vice President Sesma. I want to, uh, refer to my lengthy prior comments at our last meeting and incorporate those by reference. Uh, so that I don't have to go on, uh, too long tonight or get too emotional. But I just want to say, Mike, you have served with exceptional leadership as the dean. Of our city council and it has been my great honor to learn from you. And to serve with you for the last fourteen years. And I'm looking forward to continuing our friendship and camaraderie long after you've left the council. I also want to thank council member Sales for the opportunity to work together and serve with you the last four years. I appreciate your interest in public health, in outcome disparities, in housing. Safety net services, uh, during your time on the council. And I wish you luck in the next chapter of your community engagement and service and will certainly be following those efforts closely. Special thanks to our staff and our Board of Supervisors of Elections for running another smooth election. With a lot of new aspects and approaches in an uncertain time. We had digital petitions for the first time. It was our first time running an election that was largely by mail. Uh, having to secure multiple drop boxes in locations around the city, having only a single city polling place on election day. And at the time we opted for this approach, these options. We had no idea how many voters would decide to come in person during this pandemic. Or even where we would be exactly in the course of our COVID restrictions. And while it was a pleasant surprise to see so many people show up in person on election day, it certainly. Uh, came with some challenges and our, our staff and our board really persevered through a long election night. So I thank you for your patience and your hard work and dedication to, uh, this important, important piece of our local democracy. As we do every election year, there will be time to debrief and propose more improvements to our election process. But you all really came together to get it done with transparency, accuracy and security. So a big thanks to our staff and our Board of Supervisors of Elections. I also want to say thanks to our Montgomery County Circuit Court Clerk and friend of the city. Karen Bachele for administering the mayor's oath. Always good to have her as part of our proceedings. And as has already been said tonight, but I think is important to reiterate. I also want to thank all of the other candidates who put themselves out there, worked really hard. And sacrificed in the name of service to your city. Every one of us who has campaigned for public office knows what a commitment that is. Not only for you, but for your families and your most ardent supporters. And you can hold your heads high knowing that you all ran positive and substantive campaigns. And you made the city proud. And it's a particularly wonderful tribute to our city. As council member McNulty referenced, this is a time of national political division. Massive social and economic challenges. And we have a lot going for us here in Gaithersburg, notwithstanding all of that. And that's no less true when it comes to our candidates and our public servants. When other jurisdictions are scrounging to find good people to run. This year we had a strong crop of candidates who really stepped up. And I know all of you will continue to be involved in service to the city, whether it's through citizen advisory committees or otherwise. But the main event tonight is the celebration of those who have been sworn in. And I want to congratulate my colleague, my dear friend, my partner, Mayor Ashman, on your reelection. The bond we've developed as colleagues and friends and the things we've been able to accomplish together over fourteen years. Including eco goats, all really means so much to me and I'm thrilled we'll be continuing that path together. And I want to give a warm welcome to our two new council members. I've had the chance to work with Jim McNulty on various issues over the years. Always found him to be thoughtful, consistent and honorable. I haven't had the chance yet to work as closely with Lisa, but I've gotten to know her a bit during the campaign season and it's clear. She brings proven experience and impressive local government service, among other skills. And I look forward to getting to know each other better and working closely together on shared priorities. I have no doubt they will both be great additions to our city council. As we continue in that spirit of consensus and pragmatic problem solving. And constituent service and innovation for which Gaithersburg is well known. So to all of you, to your families, a very heartfelt congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ryan. Uh, and I, I will note that, um, Ryan correctly referred to our outgoing. Council Vice President Mike Sesma as the dean of our council. Ryan is the new dean of our council. So, uh, congratulations on that unofficial moniker. Neil, do you, how, how do we feel about your connection and your, your sound? Get, let's test it.
Well, you tell me.
Yeah, I can hear you. Go right ahead.
I switched to a different microphone. I'm not sure why. The, the computer thinks the microphone's working, but the Zoom is not so sure. At any rate, I will be brief because this is, night is not my night. It's about the. Our colleagues who are moving on to other stages of their careers and lives and our two new members. So first of all, for the two newbies who are joining us, um, this is the, this is the, uh, hazing period. So don't be surprised by anything that comes your way. No, I'm, I'm just messing with you. We don't really do that. Sure, we don't. Um, at any rate, uh, Jim, I got to know you. Uh, I think it was four years ago during your first campaign for office and. Worked with you and I was very pleased to see that you remained involved, uh, as Chair of the. Old Town Advisory Committee and in general, and for your very courageous work on the. Uh, what is now the Gaithersburg Elementary School number eight, well under construction. I know that was a tough one. Given your neighborhood, but you really went to bat for it and proved your metal. Uh, we need people who will stand up for the hard issues because that's the hardest thing to do as a politician because we want everybody to be happy with us. So I look forward to working with you. On the, on the dais, especially once we actually get to sit at the dais once more. Um, Lisa, you ran a heck of a campaign. I really, uh, was surprised and gratified by the outcome. Um, you know, I don't know how many people know this, but Lisa and I crossed paths, uh, about thirty years ago. Where we both worked for the same department at General Electric. Uh, briefly, I think Lisa moved on fairly quickly and I moved on a few years later, but it's. I've heard only great things about you from your colleagues at the county during your, for your, relating to your day job. So I look forward to what you bring to the council. Uh, and hopefully you'll continue with that same energy that you had on the campaign trail because it was very impressive. Uh, and I'd like to know what you're eating and drinking to keep that going because I could use some of that energy myself. Um, for our outgoing colleagues, uh, Mike Sesma, you've been, uh, a good friend and colleague. I got to know you long before I became a member of the council. You were very encouraging when I, uh, started thinking about stepping up. And your, your experience and, uh, with the city has been invaluable and will be missed. But I have your phone number and email address, so it won't be missed entirely. Uh, and Lorianne, it was great working with you and sitting next to you at all those meetings and passing notes back and forth. I was glad to work with you on the, uh, uh, on the, uh, equity resolution that was passed and. Provided my input and helped get it, get it moving forward. And, uh, look forward to seeing how the things go for your next adventure because I know it's a tough race. Uh, but you're out there knocking on doors. I was also very impressed over the last four years at how many other organizations you became part of. And I think there may be a new world's record if people are actually keeping track of how many committees and groups that, uh, one person can be part of while serving in public office. So any rate, um, as everyone said, we, we live in a great city. We had a wonderful campaign season. We had a great turnout. It might've been even better if you folks had argued with each other a little bit, but I'll take that. Um, we're not, uh, some of the other cities around us, uh, get a little bit more feisty, but I thought that everyone. Uh, you know, made, made it clear who they were and what they stood for. Uh, and that they were here to do good for the city of Gaithersburg. And again. Um, as Jim did four years ago, I hope that the people who didn't manage to get elected this time. Stay active, join committees and commissions and boards and continue to contribute to the city. Whether or not you decide to stand for public office going forward. Uh, I think you all bring something to the table that would be very valuable to our city. As we continue to grow and we figure out all the, as Jim said, you know, the disparate. Interests and try to reconcile everything and make the city continue to be great for all concerned. So. Look forward to working with everybody for the next four years and, or at least the two that I get so far and we'll see what happens from there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Neil, we will turn it over to council member Wu.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, and I, I just wanted to, you know, point out to Jim and Lisa that usually during my comment period, I would. Just say ditto, um, you know, especially after following the, the, the new dean of the council. Who, who will, uh, say many things, many good things, um, that I agree with. But I, I think this deserves a little bit more. And so I'd like to begin by, uh, first complimenting, um, both you and Lisa and the other candidates. As well as the, uh, Board of Elections for what I felt was just a wonderful. Uh, election time. And I'm, I'm not just saying that because I think it was one of the best fall weather seasons we've had in a long time. You know, I appreciated the collegiality of all of the candidates who ran. Um, and I appreciated also the, the, the way in which this, this election season kind of panned out. I think it, it showed a lot of what our city is made of. Um, I, I'm, I'm pleased to be working with both of you, um, at least over the next two years. Um, Jim, you know, we've gotten to be friends, um, since your last election cycle. Um, I, I think we'll, we'll continue that friendship, um, but serving on the council, you know, we have to be independent minded and deliberative. Um, and, and so while friends, we may disagree. Um, Lisa, I, I think we'll be friends. Um, getting to know you. Um, you know, briefly over the, the election time period, you know, I can tell what kind of person you are. And I'm, I'm looking forward to working with you over the next two years and, and you know, I'll certainly say that, uh. Vote for Lisa Henderson is scarred in my mind, um, thanks to your campaign team, kind of in a good way. Um, to our, our colleagues who've departed the council, you know, I'll begin with the, the former dean, uh, Mike Sesma. Um, you know, it's been a pleasure over my time working with him. I know we've had adversity. Um, in some dealings, but I think in each of those dealings I've learned. And so I thank him for his teaching of me. Um, I thank him for kind of the humbleness in which he approached being a, a citizen servant and elected official. Um, you know, to, to Lorianne, it's been great working for you, with her over the past four years. Um, I, I, I think that, that the, the collegial nature in which we. Uh, approach things really shine through for all of us. And I think it's a, a way that Gaithersburg. Does things that I refer to as the Gaithersburg way that I'll commend to both. Um, Jim and Lisa that I hope, and I think I, I know that we will continue, um, serving in that fashion, you know. The, the, the city is at its best when we're working together, um, for a consensus, you know. I've learned that over time that it, it's really not seeking the spotlight or putting the eye in team. It's really working together in the best interests of the citizens that, um, I think. Leads to the best results. And I think a lot of the, the successes we've had over the past. Uh, at least six years that I've been on the council have been where we've all worked together and found the right answer. And so I look forward to working with each of you, um, over at least the next two years. So let's get to work. Thanks.
Thank you, Rob. Um, I wanted to open it up in just, if Tanisha wanted to say a couple of words, I'd open it up to her. If she does, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Tanisha, but go, go right ahead.
I, I'll be very brief, very brief. Uh, first want to say congratulations to Jim and Lisa. Welcome aboard. Um, you have, you have observed and, uh, have certainly. Um, aspire to join what I think is one of the, the best governance teams and models across this country. Not, let alone the state of Maryland. And I've been around a little bit, so I, I feel confident in, in saying that. And, you know, the bar has been set and I think it shall be an easy transition. Based on how you ran your campaigns and, and what you stand for to join, uh, this high performing body. I'm excited to have you on the team and, and looking forward to, uh, how you might enrich, uh, our work going forward. And I'll see you bright and early in the morning. So try not to keep you too late tonight. And of course, want to say a, a, a big congratulations to Mayor Ashman for your reelection. Um, I think I might've been devastated if you had left me after only a year. Uh, so I'm glad to have more time, uh, to work with you. It has been, uh, truly a pleasure. Uh, to, uh, to work with you in the way that you add, you know, energy. And, um, always an upbeat and positive attitude. Uh, and helping us to stay positive and focused and moving forward. Uh, while keeping everybody in the tea, on the, you know, in the boat. It's not a, it's not an easy task. And I appreciate, uh, the relationship that we've been able to build and really looking forward to what's coming next. Uh, so we'll talk more about that, Jim and Lisa tomorrow and every other day going forward. Uh, it's our, uh, it's our honor as staff to provide you the support that you need to, to transition and to learn what you need. And we're going to try not to throw all of that at you at one time, but we can't make promises because sometimes we don't. Control the things like the legislative cycle and emergencies and other things. Uh, but we know you're up for the task and I'm really, really excited for you and want to say congratulations to you and to your families.
Thank you so much, Tanisha. And your sentiments are, I feel it likewise. Um, I, it would have been heartbreaking for me not to, to only have a year to work with you because I, you know, I think you're a rock star. And I think a lot of, I think all of our staff are, were filled with rock stars. Um, let me just pre-apologize for being a little repetitive here, but I get one of these speeches every four years. Um, and so I'm gonna, I got, I got a few minutes, so just, just sit tight for a minute. First, before I even get to the remarks that I wrote down, I want to take a sec to acknowledge the hard. Uh, hard work of Lindboard, Lauren Klingler. Their team, their elections team, I T people, everybody who stayed up till a million o'clock in the morning on. On, uh, November second and November third. Um, thank goodness for you guys, uh, in, in this unprecedented time, dealing with all the stuff we were dealing with. Uh, and the, our Board of Supervisors of Elections, just outstanding work. There will obviously get to, uh, lessons learned and, and, um, ways forward for the next election. And, you know, over the next couple of months, but, uh, we just want you to know that you're appreciated. I know all of the candidates in this race feel the same way. So look, in one of, in one of his lesser known pieces, the poet T S Eliot posed this question. When the stranger says, what is the meaning of this city? Do you huddle close together because you love each other? What will you answer? I'd argue that there's no better time to ask that question than right after an election and there are no people better to answer it. And there are no people better to answer it than the candidates. This campaign provided a view of our city unlike any other because it is a time unlike any other. Honestly, all the candidates went into this not knowing who would open their doors when we knocked. What sort of issues would be on their minds, or even after a certain point early on, who had already voted? What I found as I spoke with residents is that they had turned their focus to the hyper local. Perhaps they'd had their fill of what dominates the news, the pandemic and toxic national politics. I don't know. But then wanted to tell me about the sorts of things you notice when you're spending a lot of time at home. A tree that was overhanging a street sign and needed to be pruned, a sidewalk that needed repair. A request to restructure our dog park to create a separate space for smaller dogs. Concerns about speeding traffic down certain local streets. One day I walked up to some neighbors who were having a weekend barbecue in Quince Orchard Park. And one of them pointed out in the city owned tree right above me, like a giant hornet's nest, maybe eight feet up. It was the size of a boulder. And I, as I fought my instinct to get out of there, the gentleman explained to me in no uncertain terms that his vote was entirely contingent on the city removing it immediately. So look, this would be a good time for a quick shout out to staff. Because as, as our residents probably realize, it's not the mayor or council members who actually do the removal of giant hornet's nest or pruning trees. It's our staff who are always glad to help. And I want to thank them for all they do to serve our community every day and make us all look good. Without a doubt, the biggest thanks here goes to our residents. First off, this is a time of general uncertainty and doubt, and you can see that in the form of a lot more doorbell security cameras and a lot more no soliciting signs than I saw four years ago. Which underscores the fact that to open your door when a stranger knocks is kind of an act of faith. I'm, you know, I'm sure some choose not to do it, but you might be surprised how many do and how gracious they are. And how engaged they are in our community and how ready they are to come together. It honestly felt like, um, many people took my knock on their door as an act of kindness on my part, as a, like a pleasant reminder that they're not alone. And that's a special thing that, you know, after we're past the pandemic, I wonder if we'll ever truly feel that way again. The residents also deserve thanks for having spoken. So far as I know, this was a record number of votes cast in the city election. There were a lot of everywhere you turned, there were good candidates in this race and it was vigorously contested and by no means was it an easy choice. Nonetheless, our residents chose exceedingly well. Lisa Henderson and Jim McNulty are terrific people. And I expect they're going to be terrific city council members. Huge congratulations to both of them, their teams and their families. In addition to the passion, energy and smarts they displayed during the campaign. I've gotten to know them as thoughtful, reasonable, considerate and humble as well. And I expect that these qualities will help them get on board quickly. Win the trust of their colleagues and our staff and help us build a team that lives up to, perhaps even exceeds the high standards of effectiveness achieved by previous councils. I want to congratulate and thank Dave Belgard, Phil Cook, and Jamil Hernandez, noticed is in alpha order, on running outstanding camp campaigns. While this was a very hard fought competitive race. All of our candidates put their best ideas forward in a thoughtful, positive, constructive manner. They were friendly and civil to each other. They listened to and considered each other's perspectives. They are all a credit to our community and we should all look forward to more public involvement from each of them in the future. Also a credit to our community, I want to thank my challenger, Stephen Escobar for running. From the beginning, he stated his belief that competition is good for democracy. And it is. And he put a lot of his time, effort, and personal resources into this race. And did a really admirable job introducing himself to our community. What's more is he made me a better candidate and in that way greatly enriched this campaign experience for me. I see a lot of potential for Stephen's continued involvement in the city of Gaithersburg. In fact, I got a message from him today about some committees he's interested in. So, so, uh, stay tuned for more news on the Stephen Escobar front. But in the meantime, as for my victory, I am deeply honored by the support of our voters. Actually, it's beyond words. I mean, from the moment I first took office in oh seven and then became mayor in 2014 to this moment right now, I wake up every day grateful for the trust you've invested in me and mindful of the responsibility I have to try to steer our city toward its highest potential. It is a blessing to work with and lead our city council team. It is a blessing to support and work alongside our wonderful city staff. I love the residents and stakeholders who we serve and I love serving them. For all those who voted for me, thank you so much for your support. And for all those who didn't, I look forward to serving you with equal vigor. I have to thank my family, my wife Lee, kids, my parents, siblings, granddogs, honorary granddaughter. You all know who you are. And, and special appreciation, uh, for my son Jeff and his wife Brittany for being with me as I was sworn in. As they're not necessarily the first people to volunteer to be in front of the camera. So it really means a lot to me. Special thanks to my treasurer and longtime dear friend, Danny Windhorn. And my longtime campaign wife, Stacy Simon and her, her real husband, David Simon. And other, all my dear friends for their support. And thanks to all my volunteers, neighbors. Great neighbors and Orchard Place. So great to have their support and all my supporters. You, you will hear more appreciation from me over the next few weeks. Just stay tuned. But now it's time to move forward. Our city has tremendous assets, uh, fantastic municipal staff and a future worthy of boundless optimism. We have investment activity all over the place, new jobs on the way. A couple of important new school projects in the next five or six years. New parks, a new police station and council chamber, opportunities for public art. And fingers crossed, one day soon, some forward movement on Lake, the Lake Forest property. And of course, we have a new city council. To our new council team, always know that our greatest successes are collective. I think all of my colleagues reiterated that tonight. Always be mindful of our traditions of civility and good governance because that baton is now in our hands. If the six of us really work at it, we can deliver outstanding service to our residents. And at the same time, I believe we can set the example for governing bodies anywhere and everywhere in the world on how it's done. So when T S Elliot, Elliot Stranger comes to town and asks, what is the meaning of this city? It's now up to us to answer. Our team here in Gaithersburg can be the best the world has ever seen. And our city can be the very best of America. That's the bar we should set. So let's do it. That's the end of my remarks. Thank you all for your, your indulgence. And I will note that we have our first regular meeting of the mayor and council with our new council next Monday. November 22nd, 7:30 PM, um, on Zoom. Hopefully we'll be back streaming on YouTube and wherever else you watch us. And I'm assuming if anybody else has anything, anything else, raise your hand. Otherwise I'm going to adjourn this meeting. I'm not seeing any hands. So until next week, we are adjourned. Let's do great things, Gaithersburg. That's, that's our intent. Do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.